You're coming to the head table.
Yeah.
That's the way it goes.
You've got planning for dances?
I said, "I was invited."
I didn't see it, though.
It's there.
All right. Hide, hiding in plain sight, no doubt. You could pretend to be somebody else.
Yours is over here already, Jack.
Oh, that's, it's over there. That's why I couldn't find it. Your name tag's over there.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
I thought, I thought I was Rhonda Bishop.
Okay, Jack. Having one of those Wanda days?
Is the microphone on yet?
Try that again. You had the right one.
There's the correct one.
Am I gonna take Sharon's seat? No.
If you'd like, there's the correct one.
Thank you.
Yep, um, where do you want to sit?
I'll sit right here. That would be fine. You can sit right here in the throne.
Correct.
And I can sit next to Charlie and beating with...
Nice.
Very confident.
So, now does everyone have the correct agenda?
I'm gonna...
I do.
Do it.
Gotta be weak. Gotta do something.
I'm tired. Got tired of, I'm gonna work on the John Stevens campaign. I think it's gonna be tough. I know it's gonna be tough, but people need to look up, smell the road. And the pennies, things go. Everything is completely... Charlie, can you grab those papers from that end of the table?
Thank you, sir.
Are you ready to start, Sharon?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, it's just after 6:30, and I'm John Kruegerberg, and I'll call the September 16th, 2010 Plymouth Planning Board meeting to order. Full call of members. Present is Mike Ahern, John Randlett, Bert Sutcliffe, Selectman's representative Charlie Berman. Absent is Paul Wilson, Rhonda Bishop, Bob Dragon, John Kelly, Darrell Brown, and Pat Roach. Seeing that we have two vacancies, I'll appoint Jack Scarborough, who's present, to be a member of the board, a voting member of the board, tonight. And, of course, our town planner, Sharon Penny, is here. At this time in the meeting, we have the opportunity to open the floor to anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments to make. Seeing none, I'll move on to administrative matters. The only administrative matter we have tonight is the consideration of the August 19th, 2010 minutes for approval. These were emailed to us earlier. And I'll ask if anybody has any comments or corrections. I'll note two. On page two, it says, "A female citizen," I believe that was Gisela Estes. And maybe at the front of the minutes, it should say something like "minutes." So it's as opposed to just what it is, Town of Plymouth Planning Board meeting. Are there any other comments on the minutes? We can remember that if we accept these, that they can always be revisited at a later date, in case you do peruse them and find something you'd like to draw to our attention. Would anybody like to move adoption of the minutes?
Who to accept the minutes?
It's moved by Mr. Ahern, seconded by Mr. Scarborough. Is any further discussion of it? All in favor of approving the August 19th, 2010 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's adopted unanimously. Moving on to item five, correspondence. Is it still, we have none of note?
None of notes.
Okay. Item number six, report of committees. Doesn't look like we have any reports on our agenda. Did anybody suddenly join a committee that wishes to report? I hope not. Item number seven, new business. We have two items of new business. Preliminary discussion of possible impact fee for zoning ordinance expansion, and also a conceptual design, an informal conceptual design with Mr. Frank Alexander regarding property on Tenney Mountain Highway. Is Mr. Alexander our representative here? Would you like to come on up to the board and introduce yourself and ask a way for your...
Standing or sitting, or do you care?
Whatever works best for you.
I will sit. Hey, my name is Frank Alexander, and I'm with a company out of North Carolina called Primax, P-R-I-M-A-X Properties. I appreciate you letting me come up and visit with you. This is emphasis on informal, and talking with Sharon, I know this isn't a warned meeting, and so I'm not really coming up here to put site plans and official documents in front of you guys. I really came up to introduce myself and talk just a few minutes about what we're going to do and hope to achieve. My company is a developer that works, sort of represents Tractor Supply Company. And I know there's been a lot of false starts with Tractor Supply coming to Plymouth. Working, Mike McGinley's probably the most patient guy I've met. He's worked with a couple of other developers who have attempted to put a project together, and for various reasons, it didn't work out. Hopefully, a third time will be the charm, and we plan to make it that way. Our company is a small group out of North Carolina that specializes in doing build-to-suit projects for freestanding retailers like Tractor Supply Company. We've, trying to somehow list count, we're finishing our eighth store right now in upper New England. We've done five in Vermont. We've done two. We're turning over the keys on one down in Walpole on Monday, which will be our second store in New Hampshire. Have a site under contract down the southern part of the state for another project, and have worked out an agreement with Mike to step into the project here on Boulder Point Road, opposite the Walmart, and try to make it happen with you guys, with your blessing. We've also done tractors in Wisconsin, Illinois, Arkansas, Missouri. They don't let me play in the South, but send us around the country. So, we've got a lot of experience doing this. We're not a one-and-done developer. So, I feel very comfortable that we can make this project work, and want to make it work with the way you guys want it to. So, really, I just wanted to come up and kind of just introduce myself and talk a little bit about it. We hope to be on the agenda. Let me back up. We're gonna work with some of the same team, if you will, I think that had made an earlier attempt working at it. Bud Crane is here tonight, Andrews Construction. We've had a number of meetings with, is gonna help us basically do our site construction package on the project. Kevin French is gonna be helping us with the surveying. Jeff Lewis of Northport Engineering, who I think a lot of you guys know, has been in, is gonna be the civil engineer on this. And all these guys have probably know more about the project than I do at this point, because they were involved in trying to make it work previously. Hope to be in here to see you guys, get applications in, so maybe by the November meeting, we can really get in the pipe in terms of formal applications to show what we're going to propose. And the goal would be to, both on a local and state level, move through the permitting and be in a position to start construction in early spring, as soon as the frost is out of the ground and allows us to do it. I'll ramble on as long as you want me to, but I don't know how familiar you guys are with Tractor Supply. I imagine you've probably seen them around the state or shopped with them, but it's a, about a 19,000-square-foot building under roof. And then they also have, like a farm supply company will have, they have outside display areas that are in addition to the enclosed space. Parking lot, loading to the rear, pretty straightforward retail use. We've talked with Sharon, I've had, I guess, a couple of meetings and a number of conversations with Sharon, and I've met with Maryam before. I understand there's some sensitivity to aesthetics up on that road. We're gonna be sensitive to that, too. We want to work with the board to make sure that the building we put up there, there's a lot of investment up on that road, and we want to make sure that this, this project fits in nicely with what's up there. And really, other than that, if you have any questions for me, that was really the lump sum of it. I just wanted to come up here and sort of introduce myself and put a face with a name and let you know that we're excited about this and want to get this project rolling. And this is, this is kind of an odd one, because normally I'm coming in cold to a community that's never had tractor, and this one, I feel like I'm, there's some ghosts ahead of me from, from attempts before. So, that's one reason in particular, I really wanted to come here and do this a little atypical way of sort of an informal introduction, just to see if you guys had any questions or anything that I could do to sort of set the table before we really get started.
Mr. Scarborough?
Where in North Carolina are you from?
Charlotte.
Charlotte. Okay. Thank you.
That'll be the easiest question I get through this entire process.
Oh, I spent several years in North Carolina.
Oh, good.
Yes, Mr. Berman?
Where's the, on Boulder Point, where is the lot?
If you climb the hill, the piece of property Mike is here tonight owns, what do you, like nine or 10 acres up on the, you climb the hill, and about where it flattens out, directly opposite Walmart's parking lot, Mike has a track of land. Our concept is to, as part of our process, subdivide about four acres of that property. We're gonna be right, how to describe, we're gonna be uptight next to the embankment that runs up to the medical clinic. So, we're gonna be, we'll be the next guy in line. If you pass us, you then turn into the medical clinic and then the hospital clinic beyond that. So, we'll be across the parking lot from Walmart.
On the left going up.
On the left going up, facing the Walmart. We'll face the Walmart parking lot, if you will.
If I recall correctly, and I may not, that the previous incantation of this project was focused on the road that, in a sense, connects Boulder Point to the Walmart drive.
Connecting driveway.
And, and there was some discussion about where the driveway would be in relation to that. Is that still in play for you?
Not really. What we've done in working with Jeff Lewis, and one thing, the, the earlier concepts that came in, we're looking at trying to do, I think, a grander project that had a lot of, lot of earth moving going on, and trying to have a driveway further downhill, if you will, that was more trued up with that. We've, we've sat down and looked at it fresh, and, and our plan, our conceptual plan, because it's still at that point, is, is a little bit different. We flipped the building around so that now the building itself is gonna be closer to the medical clinic, if you will. The site, there's some, I don't know if you want to get into this, based on our research, there's some, that's a filled site. You know, Walmart took some of the cut off of their site and filled it on a portion of that property. So, there's certain pockets in that property that have some basically bad soils we're gonna have to remove and replace. So, we're trying to position the building so that the building bears more on native soils, if you will, and to do that, we're pushing it a little bit further up the hill. That'll make the site work less disruptive and allow us to maintain more of a existing grade. All those mounds you see on there are gonna disappear. If you took those mounds off, that really gets you down more to what we see the finished grade the property's gonna be. We're, to do this, we're actually proposing, we're gonna move the driveway further uphill, so we're gonna have, we're not gonna be related to that driveway at all. Here's a 10-minute answer to a 10-second question, but basically, we're gonna have our driveway further uphill away from that. As I've talked with Sharon, now the connectivity of that driveway is important to Tractor Supply, and that makes common sense. If someone's shopping at Walmart wants to shop a tractor, they want to do one of these things. And I understand, once the traffic signal and the road improvements, which really don't have anything to do with me, are finished at the bottom of Boulder Point, that's gonna trigger some pre-existing conditions in Walmart's approval to open that security gate that will open up access between their driveway and Boulder Point. And that's a good thing for Tractor, because they want shoppers to be able to flow between the two properties without having to go out and get on the highway.
If I recall correctly, they were concerned at the presentation they made earlier with that connectivity. And I think the conversation at this board was that that was an issue that really the Select Board would wrestle with, because they're in charge of roads. So, just as, just to, so you're sure and clear that there's sort of distinctive rules and regulations that we can't touch.
Thanks for sharing that, because that will be important. And, again, we don't need to get to this point, but based on what we've seen, and Sharon's been huge help, there, there appear to be some conditions in, which I know isn't part of this, but appears to be some conditions in Walmart's original approvals that sort of mandate that they open that driveway once a traffic signal goes in down at Boulder Point, because that would enhance the, the traffic flow for everybody in the community. So, again, that's a separate discussion, but I appreciate you sharing that, because that is important to Tractor, and I think it'd be important to the town, too.
And Selectman Berman is a representative...
Okay.
From the board on this board.
I don't think there's any issues with the, the board, at least that I've seen, but I do know that Walmart is really interested in opening that up. They've talked to me a couple of times. It's the DOT is the problem. Getting them to, everything was moving right along until DOT found out they were gonna be responsible for putting the light in, and now it's slowed down. So, I don't know what we do there.
Just informationally, part of my doing my homework, I talked to, and I'm working, I think the guy's name is Doug King with DOT. I spoke with Doug a couple of times, nice guy, I've never met him. This was a couple of weeks ago, and he called me back and did a little homework, and he said, "At that point in time, the," you know, there's so many checks and balances with those guys, but it's like the foundation design for the poles had been approved, the pole arms or something were in manufacture and had been released. So, it's, he, he said, "Look, you know, the way he left the message is, he said, "I feel everything's gonna be in place by the end of the year and ready to go now." You know, and that's me getting it about fifth hand, but it sounded like it's a slow-moving process, but the process is moving, so...
Okay. Well, it sounds like you have a good sense that it's complex, and there's lots of different agencies and boards involved, so as long as you're walking into that understanding.
If there's one truism in this world, I don't care what state you're in, messing with a state DOT is always complicated, so...
Well, it, it sounds like you've already interacted quite a bit with the town planner, and she's really, you know, the, the point for helping you out.
Right.
And will be happy to, you know, either have another informal meeting with you next time, or to consider your application.
And next time, we'll bring Jeff with us and the team. We'll sit here and really, because, and I think that needs to be warned as a public hearing or whatnot, and, or does it...
Not as a, not as a conceptual, no. As long as we stay conceptual. So, it's up to you, you know, if you were to go right to design review, but we'll chat and figure it out.
Okay, we'll talk, I'll probably talk with you informally for that. So, that's really the whole thing, really, I wanted to talk to you about, just wanted to say hello, and I've got parting gifts. I stopped in Tractor today, I don't know if you guys want these, but always grab a handful of them. If anybody wants them, they can just have them. There's a stack of their catalogs, and then they put out a monthly, or excuse me, a quarterly magazine that just has some nice articles in it, so I don't want to take them home on the plane, so I'll leave them here.
I need a chainsaw, Frank.
Oh, well, there you go.
Darn.
I'll loan you mine.
I'll bring one of those next time and just leave it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Moving along then, in new business, we have a preliminary discussion on possible impact fee zoning ordinance expansion. Everybody should have received at their seat four handouts from the town planner, two of them being zoning ordinance chapters, and one of them from the state, and one of them being the Town of Plymouths. And the fourth item being a summer email that the town planner sent to us, trying to sort of prepare us, start thinking conceptually about what we're, what we want to get done at this meeting. I think, as we'll all recall, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm recalling this correctly, the Select Board brought this issue to our attention, and maybe with that, we should turn it over to Selectman Berman.
I guess it's, the whole thing started with the CVS application. And I was, I think it was my first time on the board, and the impact fees just sort of jumped out. And their attorney, she looked like somebody hit her in the head with a... And my, my take on it was that I don't think that, that impact fees are something you can arbitrarily decide you're gonna assess to any one developer. You should have a formula and, and, you know, values, and it should apply across the board. So, the, the planning board said the Selectman should take a look at it, and our position is that this should be something that's, the planning board should develop a, a policy and a fee schedule and the whole thing. And, you know, the, the onsite work, or the stuff that's directly affected by the development, say if Lowe's had gone in, you know, the lights, whatever had to be done down there would have been taken care of. But I think the real issue is, what's the long-term effect of all these businesses that are going in on Tenney Mountain Highway? I mean, you look at Tenney Mountain Highway today compared to five years ago, it's, it's starting to become a real serious problem. That suicide lane's gonna be more than just a name if we keep it up. And the other thing is, we've got the workforce housing issue, impact fees on, on residential development. Plymouth really hasn't had a, a serious issue with residential development since I've been here. But I think sooner or later, you know, when the economy turns around, and this is, could become one of those areas where people working in Concord are gonna come up and find the real estate values are gonna be enticing. So, I think we should try to develop a formula to assess impact fees as part of the application for development, such as the, you know, this Tractor Supply Company. I mean, they're, they're gonna be a small part, but if you put four or five of those up on Boulder Point, or, you know, beyond toward the circle, you're gonna see a lot more traffic. I, I don't think there's any question that this is a, this town's a, a hub. And of all the places, you're gonna see the, the change in infrastructure is gonna be Tenney Mountain. The Highland Street lights, the light by Dunkin' Donuts, and, you know, I don't know if anything beyond that is an issue at this point in time, but we should start assessing impact fees that put money away for the future development of Tenney Mountain Highway. I, I lived on, in Fremont, New Hampshire, and the way to the mass border was through Haverhill on Route 125. And let me tell you, if you want to see the reasons for impact fees and, and infrastructure change, you should see that thing. It's a mess, an absolute mess. And it was a two-lane highway that just developed topsy through four or five towns, and you've got Haverhill on one end, Plastow, and then the other end, you now have Epping at the intersection of Route 102 and Route 25. And it's just an absolute disaster. It's, the state's got a big hand in it, but at the same time, the, the towns have gotta look at the flow into it and, you know, ways of getting around it so you can commute without going through this traffic, and I think we're gonna see the same thing here.
So, so if I, I saw Mr. Scarborough's hand and then the town planners, after I saw my own hand.
Right in your face.
So, it seems, it seems to me that already you've introduced sort of three issues to the ta, on the table about impact fees, at least the way I'm thinking about them. So, I'd like to see if I'm hearing you correctly, and if, and maybe you can correct me. But one issue would be, when, when does an impact fee get triggered? And I think that the way I've read some of the ordinances here, that the town can determine that a development has not necessarily triggered an impact fee, and that might be related also to the concept, and I might be misreading this, to there being a six-year window to use any impact fee? So, it sort of has, so, in addition to, when does, when is an impact fee triggered, where, when does the town articulate and identify the, the impacts fruition? So, that is, so that if something needs to, a road needs to be widened or built to a higher standard. So, that'd be one, what, about the trigger. The other is the issue of sort of scale and proportion, and how does one figure out, you know, what an appropriate amount of money or a percentage of money is? And I think that also probably ties back to the idea of the town having a sense of what the project is going to be in the next six years. And then the third issue that I've heard you say is, how does the town identify its projects compared, when it might be in competition with the state? So, for example, do we have the power to, to expand Route 25? Or is that a state project? And, and I think for me, that raises some questions about when does the state step in and charge impact fees? But obviously, you're, I think, a very good example of Boulder Point not being a state highway, but that would be something that maybe would need to be considered. So, so are those three areas correctly identified by me?
Yeah, I'd say that's as close as we can get at this stage of the game.
Right, and this is preliminary discussion, so...
I think the point is, we have to develop a fee schedule that identifies what the amount of money we're talking about as part of the application process for the person who's developing the property, like CVS. You don't pull that out of the hat the last meeting when we're just getting ready to issue. We issued the permit that night, and, and the impact fee came out of the corner. And I, I don't have a problem with impact fees, but I sure have a problem with dreaming them up halfway through a meeting and deciding. That could have stopped the whole thing right there. And I don't think we had an idea what the impact was gonna be, or how to, how to quantify it in terms of dollars. I mean, Highland Avenue, Highland Street is, is gonna be 90% of your access to Tenney Mountain Highway from downtown. And it's not gonna get any better. I mean, the town could be looking at, that, that could be an impact on a town, the expansion of Tenney, of Highland Street.
Right.
And, and that's not an easy, I mean, you've got a lot of property that's real close to the street that you're gonna have to acquire if you expand that road. You know, why, turn it into four lanes, or a portion of it, four lanes.
Okay, and of course, anybody in the audience shouldn't fear that we're suddenly talking about expanding Highland Street that way.
No, I think you're looking at, you know, 15 years. We're a hub, which means the Interstate 93 exit, was it 26?
26. 26 and 25.
And 25.
25, 26. 26 would, would take a lot of people that are trying to go to Tenney Mountain Highway from, other than Plymouth, and you wouldn't come through town. But you're gonna get a lot of people coming off of 25, the university, community. Those kids will be going up there during the year, more and more of them.
Okay. Well, I think this is so far a good way to introduce some of the issues before us. Mr. Scarborough and, and the town planner had some questions or comments? Mr. Scarborough?
Only because I'll lose my train of thought. You know that. Just, just a little, a little preaching for a moment. In the right aspect, I mean, what, what we're talking about, you know, it's transportation, this aspect, let me start at the very beginning. As we know, you know, impact fees, transportation's a major one, obviously. The effect on school population and services, and then water and sewer infrastructure for this conversation right now, at least initially, I, I think it's centering around Tenney Mountain Highway, because that's where these last two issues arose with Tractor Supply, unfortunately, getting the booby prize and having to put in, and graciously so now. and getting the booby prize and having to put in, and graciously so now, the traffic light, although I believe that their corporate warrants it, and then CVS, kind of missing it by that much. Mr. Berman's absolutely right, we can't do this arbitrarily, capriciously, or with any sort of discrimination, or we'll be in very hot water. As a former transportation planner, I'm really concerned about Tenny Mountain Highway because, as y'all know, it's kind of boxed on either end. I mean, on one end is the traffic circle, and on the other end is the entrance to 93 and Route 3, and the entrance to downtown. Not only do we need to look at impact fees for their own sake, but we need to look at impact fees, at least in the realm of transportation, in terms of transportation planning, because we've got to get a handle on the growth and how it should properly proceed. I'm not saying it shouldn't proceed, I'm just saying, you know, I think our job, or certainly my job as the planner, is to anticipate these kinds of changes and the positives and negatives that they bring, but, you know, we've got issues already with slip, I mean, center-turning lanes not being overutilized, we've got, just from what I can see in the very subjectively and non-scientifically, from the last six weeks of trying to get out of Smithbridge Road and stuff, and I'm sitting there going, oh my word, we've got issues here, and all these brand, quote-unquote, brand-new traffic lights. So I just think that the transportation aspect of any impact fees right now is hugely important. We need to look at all of the aspects of impact fees, but I personally, and as professionally as the planner, I think that's our big baby right now, because we're lucky enough, we're fortunate enough, to have continued growth here and to have commercial and retail growth. You know, there's still interest going on, and I just don't know where you would, let's say theoretically, put another traffic, like there, you're starting to get queuing up and back up, and it's a big concern of mine.
Yeah, it's almost easier to go, come out of Smithbridge Road and take a right.
It is, I've done it.
Than it is to try to make the left-hand turn.
Then do the suicide dash across, yeah.
But you've got other issues, you've got, you know, this housing, you know, we've got one project right now, it's about 24 units. You could end up with 40 or 50 kids in the school just out of that project, with all the attendant classroom space, busing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that, to me, is a little easier to assess on the front end than trying to see what the effect of CVS is going to be on Highland Street or Tenny Mountain, and who's responsible for it. But, you know, we're going to see, I think you're going to start seeing some development in this town that could be kind of tricky. I think that's something else the board has to deal with, is the developments, you know, these half acres, you've got that thing up on, what's the street I live on, Chatteran Lane?
Chatteran Lane, yeah.
I mean, I think, I really think the board screwed up on that one.
You know where to, you know how to get back?
Uh-huh, yeah.
He's got the smart part.
Well, as an example, I think Chatteran Lane should have been required by the planning board, the developer should have been required to put a pumping station on top of that hill. You can't get water past, a little bit past my house, you can't get enough water pressure, so they're putting in wells. It doesn't make any sense. They got a cistern on top of the hill, that would have been solved very simply by telling the developer, you spent $150,000, you put a pumping station on top. Because the water district had put in the, they have the, I think they have the water sewer lines in, and that's the kind of thing that I think we've got to begin to look at.
Mr. Scarborough, you wanted to say something?
Well, all I really wanted to say was, before we start to debate fees, I think we, we as a board, really need to analyze what this development's going to be, and what we could expect as revenue for the town. And then we levy fees based on that. And that's, basically, that's it. Just, we need to strategize how we're going to develop this place.
Yeah, I think you can do, we could probably get money to do some surveys of some of the areas, like Epping. I'd love to find out of Epping, I know they don't give anything away down there, but I mean, Epping has had a tremendous amount of development at the intersection of 101 and 25. They got a Home Depot, they've got Walmarts, they've got Coles, or, not Coles, Lowe's.
Lowe's.
Wouldn't that be as simple as saying, you know, send us your schedule of your impact fees?
Yeah, we'll go down and find out how they, because that's the other thing, they're two-state highways, so how do they deal with the state, and you know, how do you assess impact fees on these developers?
Yeah, that's a key question.
Yeah, London, they're going through it right now.
Carl has a question.
I want to go to Mr. Ranlet first, unless you were telling Mr. Miller I was a question.
Frank's had his for a while.
You're on my blind side there.
Okay. Over the years, I've been on all the master plan boards and Tenny Mountain Highway corridor study, but one of the things I've watched as a public citizen is that the boards, in dealing with a particular applicant, such as Boulder Point, you're empowered for evaluating their proposal such for drainage, to meet the requirements within the bounds of the applicant's property. But what's happening, one of the issues that's happened, and is a big issue, is the drainage, collective drainage systems get down to the impoundment, which is 25, it's perpendicular to the natural flow of the terrain, to the river. And the drainage systems that are designed for Walmart, for the Dollar Store, and so on, individually calculate correctly, and so hence you look at it and say, all right, it's approved. Collectively, the infrastructure for Tenny Mountain Highway's drainage system is decades old and is undersized because the dimensions of the drainage systems were not intended to accept any more flowage. It's not just like, about like Chatteran Lane, you had 24-inch culverts on the high side of the development feeding into a 12-inch culvert down at the bottom. Obviously, Mother Nature didn't particularly care for it. But one of the issues for that particular corridor is off-site improvements that you can evaluate as to, it would have an impact collectively, that would either impact the state, who has to maintain it, or the town, if it's Highland Street. The other points that might help you out in forming a bullet-line strategic planning is obviously the master plan, and each one of those sections has a kind of a wish list, where we'd like to be in 10 years, and look there to see where we expect, as a group, the citizens came together and said, well, we would like to see this happen, either residential in this zone or business out on Tenny Mountain Highway. And from that, you can get an idea of what impacts would be costing to the town, which would then generate a number set for an impact fee. But there's, the other big issue that happens on Tenny Mountain Highway in particular is obviously access. Town West Road, that's the road that is where the Ford car lot is, Meredith Ford, that was actually designed to go west, it goes all the way, it goes south, and then there's the right-of-way that goes up the hill, the backside of that hill, of Boulder Drive. And that was supposed to provide access to several hundred acres there and connect up at the top. Problem is, the, that planning board who approved that action, obviously, we've all moved on, and we've sort of forgotten that, and then new planning board members come in, and everybody's forgotten that action. And the next person that comes to apply to do something has no corporate history of that. We've done similar on the north side of Tenny Mountain Highway, of interconnecting some of those, the small shopping centers. And people are, right now, they get off into one shopping thing, and rather than come back out on 25, they just cross the big ditch and drive up, because that was one of our plans 10, 15, 20 years ago, that we were going to put in parallel lanes so that the amount of traffic flow.
It's interior circulation.
Right. Well, that's, you know, that's, the problem is, your legal authority to act to force a landowner into doing something that they're not an applicant of, but you need the monies to get the thing started, either by design, get the monies as a, your fee structure, to get the town's engineering to look at drainage systems, water, sewer, or additional access for properly, safety purposes for the utilization of Tenny Mountain Highway. But there's a lot of stuff that's already in the master plan that covers virtually all the zones as to what we want to do, and from there, you can figure out the town's portion of the cost to the town, and that might help you generate a figure.
Well, thanks to you, Mr. Ranlet, we do have the corporate memory off. It's just not at this table, but it's in the room. Okay, so let's come back to the board. Where, I mean, how do we get this ball rolling? I mean, and I think maybe even before that, is it a ball the board unanimously feels, wants to roll?
No, I just had a suggestion about, because, I mean, there's so many different angles to approach this from, perhaps, and everybody's going to tar and feather me, but maybe some subcommittees on aspects of this? I mean, I think that going to find out, or trying to quantify right now, what we want to look at is too far afield. I had mentioned in that memo, do we want to look at strictly residential impact fees, strictly commercial, a combination of both? Sitting here, listening to this conversation, in my opinion, I think we need to look at the different aspects of the impact fee situation, which would be, for example, the transportation aspect, the, I think we could pull out water and sewer, maybe as a subset of that, or separately, the school population impact, potential impact, excuse me, fire and life saving, safety, and then the, perhaps, the revenue aspect of it. I mean, just small little subcommittees to report back, so we could have the larger conversation without, you know, all going off in a million different directions, just a suggestion, but this is a fairly multifaceted beast here, so.
So you're suggesting a subcommittee for school?
For each of those, at least four aspects. I mean, I don't want to over, you know, make this bureaucratic nightmare, but there's an awful lot of considerations out there, so.
Well, there are seven voting members of the board, and if you have four subcommittees, that's.
Gives us something to do other than.
Well, there's always me, too.
There's you, too, and of course, and the non-voting, you know, alternates are important members of the board, so.
I would be happy to take on fire and.
Life safety?
Fire and life safety.
Fire, police, life safety, EMS.
Yep.
All righty.
Mr. Sutcliffe?
Well, I have to ask, the way that I'm reading this, it has to be a capital facility, it's not so much fire or life safety, it's a fire building or fire truck equipment, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it has to be something that the town bears the cost of, so again, a state highway, if I'm understanding correctly, the state pays for all of that, so you really can't have an impact fee assessed by the planning board on something on Tenny Mountain Highway. I think that's why we're talking Highland Street for CVS.
I think, you know, we've gone through this safety complex process, and we've heard a number of people talk about designing a 50-year building or whatever the devil that means, but fire departments don't expand by putting on an extra garage or something, they expand by opening up different houses.
Substations.
You've got a firehouse in downtown, and when Tenny Mountain develops, you don't want to have one out there. And, you know, so I think the impact on the town on Tenny Mountain's going to be for sure another firehouse, I mean, there's no question.
The highway aspect, I mean, it depends on the type of project to quantify, but a lot of times, the town will need to come up with a 20% match, so that, and I'm sorry, I didn't get that far in my conversation, but I think in terms of actual expansion of a roadway, or let's say a roundabout, or whatever, not a signal per se, because that's on the developer, or the developer's plural, but, you know, to perhaps raise, as Mr. Berman said before, you know, that little pocket of money that you're going to need eventually to address the needs that the development is generating. I mean, you're absolutely right statutorily, but that's, that was my thinking on it.
So what I think Mr. Sutcliffe is pointing Mr. Scarborough and his subcommittee to do is to be able to articulate exactly what capital costs would be affected. Seems to me that what all these different subcommittees should do is find out what other towns do on, with respect to their subcommittee's job. So if we look around and we find out that it's their other standard formula in other towns in New Hampshire for life safety issues to say, every six years, there's going to be a new police car, maybe that, maybe a percentage of that happens, three, I'm just using numbers, I mean, I don't know what you're going to discover. But I think, but I don't think we should necessarily imagine that we're going to blaze new ground in the state by having impact fees on these issues. So if you're right, Mr. Sutcliffe, I think, in terms of we don't want to do anything extra-legal, so as long as we follow, we see what other towns have done legally, we should have an idea of what we can do legally. Does that sound reasonable?
I think this is fact-finding somewhat.
That's a good way to put it, fact-finding.
And once again, in terms of transportation, it just occurred to me, I mean, there is a public transportation, great public transportation effort afoot on a regional basis with Plymouth as the hub, and I think at some point, there may be requests for appropriations at town meetings, so this, you know, in a bigger scheme, I mean, it's a little beyond impact fees, quid pro quo, right there from A to B, but in the larger analysis, it's there.
You know, I think another thing for the committee, for the board to keep in mind, at least the last time that I recall this coming up as a discussion item, some members of the board questioned whether that was unfair, in a sense, an unfair tax on developers, that there is a town budget and that everybody pays their town taxes, whether it's a school tax or it's for the town. And I think we need to be very clear that we're not just trying to potentially discourage development by making it more expensive to build here, that we're really in the main with respect to how businesses run throughout the state. Does that seem fair in our fact-finding? This is to understand that, you know, there's going to be some perspectives that we need to also investigate.
Yep. And I will pursue that.
Thank you. Transportation slash transit, roadway expansion is a category.
You're wrong.
I knew that. I was just kind of thrown out there. Revenue generation, those costs, pro and con aspects, the direct effect or potential effect on school population.
In my former life, I did some work for a planning consulting firm that did work with assessing impact fees for schoolchildren, so I'll be happy to.
Thank you for fessing up.
Into that.
I'll do transportation.
Of course. These don't have to be one-person committees, subcommittees.
No, they don't. No, I think that's a misnomer.
Can I request the participation of a select board member on my committee?
Yeah, I think that we have the freedom to invite.
You want me to do that fire thing again?
Yeah.
I already screwed it up once, what are you going to do?
I'm talking about my wife.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to captive audience.
Well, this is fact-finding, and I don't think the board should be aver- be averse to that, or if anybody in the audience on, on cable is watching this and says, oh, I have an interest in that.
Yeah.
I know, the word "subcommittee" is a little off-putting perhaps, but this, we're just, there's, like I said, there's so many aspects to this, we need a lot of information to even begin to frame it.
And she's qualified. She served on 911 in Lewiston, Maine, and understands fire and police, so...
I'd be willing to look into the, you know, the residential impact fees, it's...
Okay, that'd be great.
It's, I think it's becoming an issue, but...
And that would, that would be infrastructure, water?
One family, single family, etc.
Okay. I think water, water and sewer would have a...
It could include the effects of the student housing, which is, I think you're going to see more and more student housing, which is going to have an effect on the neighborhoods closer in.
I can certainly help you on water and sewer.
We might get water and sewer involved.
Yeah.
So I, I wonder in terms of if the efficiency of these subcommittees, if it makes sense to analyze the data the way it's been divided, but maybe to research and do some of the fact-finding differently. It doesn't seem very efficient if four subcommittees all called up Epping, because you used that as an example, and Epping had a field for phone calls about...
Want me to just call them and see what they've got?
Somebody, and it doesn't, I mean, if, if, if that, if you have that time in your work schedule, your workload, to call and, and find out, it might be good to maybe centralize a few target towns that have target, that have impact fees, and then rather than you spend a lot of time trying to dissect it, distribute the relevant sections, or if it's all combined in one packet, and let us discern it.
Lots of contacts and fire and...
And to poll.
Well, one of the things that's listed in here on the impact fees is, you know, the effect of solid waste collection, transfer, recycling, et cetera.
Yes, so, so finding some, looking at polling these other towns might add some good insight. Mr. Wilson, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest that perhaps a good town to look at would be Tilton, because Tilton has seen in the past 10 to 15 years, really explosive growth along Route 3, and they are a community that's right along Route 93, the same way we are, and they had to face up to this issue there, and they did come up with a solution. I'm not sure if it's, if it was a good one, but I, I'm not criticizing, I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, no, you're absolutely right, it's the same scenario.
How effective the solution was, but I know that they did impose some changes in, in taxation or in impacts, the impact fees, and I think it'd be worthwhile to talk with them.
It seems to me Littleton might also be a good community, because they have a sort of historic downtown, and then off, off the highway on, on the other side. Littleton, the sort of the big boxes developed.
And 93, you know.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mr. Ahern?
I kind of might approach this differently. Rather than having a bunch of little subcommittees, possibly have one subcommittee, and like Mr. Kruekenberg had mentioned, a town may get two or three phone calls, why don't we have one committee that then looks at towns and finds out what Epping does for impact fees, then maybe Littleton, or, and approach it that way, and have one committee where the members meet, figure out what towns they want to, want to look at, and see, you know, maybe one town does impacts for three different residential and commercial, and get it all together, bring all the resources together first before we start divvying up.
I, I think, I think that's where we're headed, but I sort of jumped the gun.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, if, that's the analysis of, we're just bringing stuff to the table now, I believe. I mean, subcommittees is, like I said, probably the wrong word, but...
Well, I, I, I still believe we need to develop a strategy before we launch.
Right.
And then follow and execute.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just the way I'm trained.
And the fact-finding is figuring out what kind of strategy to develop?
Kind of chicken and egg here, but I think we need to, because there's so much out there, we need to see what we're dealing with initially.
So maybe we want to reconfigure the definition of the subcommittee to include Mr. Scarborough and the town planner, and maybe Mr. Ahern would like to take over the, the school impacts that I had mentioned.
I don't see him respond.
You know, he raised his hand. It's on videotape, we have it. So then, so then, how quickly does this subcommittee want to work? Do you want to report to us in one month? In two weeks? Not six months, obviously.
I can, I can report in a month.
Does the planner, does that give the planner enough time to make those phone calls and get the information?
I think so, hopefully.
I'll make the calls.
To the towns?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Jack. That's wonderful, because I always have best of intentions, and then I get way late on something. That works fine for me, I mean, I don't know if we're looking at a separate date from, or we're just, you know, presume our workshop date would be the, the time we get together on this?
Well, our workshop would be the first Thursday of the month, wouldn't it? So that would be right around, that'd be roughly two weeks, and that might be fast turnaround. How do you, how do you...
I don't have anything to do.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
What would be our intent here? After fact-finding, after fleshing out a strategy, would it be to propose a town ordinance?
Well, I think that's, I think that's a potential ultimate outcome.
So what I wanted to do is to kind of begin with the end in mind, and say that if we're going to propose a town ordinance, we know that that would have to be approved at town meeting time. And if that's the case, we can back up from there and ask, when does it, we have to have public hearings on it in time to present it to the town, and to back up from that date, to set our own deadlines for when we should be prepared to propose something.
And I would suggest that that is part of the strategy.
Absolutely.
Well, let's see, I mean, the town meeting is in March, and so...
Right, but there's certain, the amendments to zoning, but...
I think everything has to be submitted by January.
I was just going to say, so, so...
Yeah, probably late December to go to public area in January.
To me, I think it'd be a...
Thank you. As I was saying, so the town meeting's in March, and so if we work backwards, I know that we need to get things in certainly by January, so the end of December would be something that we would want to be ready to roll with getting public comment. So this is September, seems to me that we need to have things moving in October, so that we can, especially with holidays in November and December, that we can get moving. But it does seem to me that if you spent two weeks to get this, to get the information, have a subcommittee meet, and then another two weeks for them to sort of have digested and distilled and present to the board, you know, their findings and perhaps some recommendations or initial reactions, that would mean that at the third, the third Thursday of next month, October, that work, does that seem too slow or too fast?
Let's get the information.
Yes.
The information, we've got to get the information first.
Right.
What are these towns?
Well, and Charlie, you have to, you have to trust the subcommittees in their digestion of the information.
But if it takes 10 days to get the information from, let's say, five towns...
Yeah.
And then, and we're meeting in two weeks, that only gives four days for the subcommittee...
Ambitious, yeah.
Yeah, that only gives four days for the, the subcommittee to get things together.
I'm ambitious.
We're going to be seeing a lot of each other. You better tell Val.
So, a lot of, there are a lot of quiet members of the board. Where do we want to give direction for the subcommittee to report to us?
Who's the subcommittee? Have we decided?
Mr. Scarborough, the town planner, Mr. Ahern, is anybody else wishing to volunteer? Mr. Berman?
Mr. Berman.
Yes, Berman, of course you were, I'm sorry to exclude you there.
I mean, I'll help with, I'll help with somebody, but my question is, you know, if, I mean, we talked about the master plan, I mean, if we're going to look at expansion and everything, I mean, are we going to come up with the conceptual view of Tenny Mountain here and there? Because, you know, you drive into North Conway, it seems a lot like 25 here, you know, and I mean, it's just one facility after another, after another, and, you know, I mean, when we're looking at the impact, how, from a master plan standpoint, what are we looking, what's, what's the plan, what is Tenny Mountain going to look like 10 years from now? And shouldn't we have that before, you know, we go out and look at everything else?
That's, that's the strategy.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's what the fact-finding subcommittee has to, has to determine, is how have the other towns done this?
And I think we could look at the Route, the 25, Tenny Mountain Highway corridor study, which was 2002, maybe, so eight years ago, big changes, I believe, in, in the last eight years. And I, I know in, in the case of Conway, or North Conway, I mean, that precipitated the Route 16 corridor study, which was from, went with location all the way down to Portsmouth, and I mean, it was millions of dollars in mitigation, so to speak, in transportation planning for a lot of different areas, but Conway was such a mess, it had gridlock, and I'm not, I'm getting off, because I'm on my transportation soapbox, but, but I think we still have an opportunity here to preclude anything that's really horrendous in terms of access, bad access management, so...
Yep, but I think Mr. Ranlet's bringing an important point, that we don't end up having the cart in front of the horse, and that, and that we, our strategy, as Mr. Scarborough has put it, is very clear, and, and sort of sets out maybe very baby steps, this, this first, and this and that, but we don't have enough information yet to know how other towns have set out that strategy, and I think, I think that's what we need to hear.
And that's what I plan to explore.
Wonderful.
Yes, Mr. Sutcliffe?
And in answer to your question before, I would argue that six weeks is the time to do this, the next work session. I think two weeks is too, too short a time, but it's suited for a work session, and I wouldn't worry about town meeting, because the ordinance has already passed, it's just a question of how we want to interpret the power that we currently have. I mean, this is more of a guidance issue than it is...
Like, we have to create our guideline.
That's a good point. I mean, you're talking about putting numbers on something that's already...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
You've got the ordinance, but now you have to develop an implementation, so to speak, yeah, right, it's on the books.
Already hitting the CIP, the system employees.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. Well, why don't, why don't we, while we're here, sort of come up with a short list of things we'd like the subcommittee to come up with in terms of, you know, being able to report to us? So, and then maybe that can help us decide whether four weeks or six weeks makes sense. Mr. Sutcliffe, are you concerned that we're going to have so many proposals in four weeks that we would be burdensome to the, to the applicants?
I, I would think that one large proposal between now and then could be the difference between a half-hour meeting and a four-hour meeting in four weeks, being the normal time for applicants. So I, I think that reserving a time that you know you're going to have some time to set aside for this.
That's my fear, too, is to get derailed by some huge thing.
Okay, so have we taken off the, the table, the fear of the public meeting deadline? Or is that still...
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
You know, bird hit the nail on the head, we're already got the law.
That's true. So...
Price tag.
So it seems like there's a building consensus that in six weeks, at our first Thursday of November...
Workshop.
Workshop meeting, we would expect a report of some sort from the subcommittee, and we'd want to know which towns were looked at, and we'd want to have a sense of, you know, what did, what did those towns have in common with their impact fees, what were, what was different, how those towns went about creating their own strategy for when it's, when an impact fee is triggered, and how they, you know, and sort of the details that we just don't know are out there. Is there anything else, Mr. Sutcliffe, that we should probably be asking the subcommittee for, or other members of the board that we should ask the subcommittee for?
Who's chair of the subcommittee? Who?
You.
I?
I think...
You.
Well, Mr. Scarborough, you volunteered first.
You've got to shut up at these meetings. Well, I think, well, we, we'll have a meeting and, and task the members of the subcommittee to do certain things.
Yep.
And I think the thing is to contact, who are we going to contact, and who's going to make the contact?
Well, I, I would recommend town planners from regional towns approximately sized as Plymouth, and their, their infrastructure issues, talk to them about that, if they're I've got very good insight into fire and police contacts in a variety of communities, so...
Right, and, and even in down in Concord, talking to some state...
Yes.
...officials about...
And that would, that would be a, that would be an issue that I would invite or invoke Valerie's contacts, and ask her to question people.
And there's some even planning, statewide planning professionals who live here in Plymouth that we can tap.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I, I liked what you said, I think it was you, Mr. Scarborough, about trusting the subcommittee.
Yes.
So I think we need to trust all of you to figure out how often you'll meet and how you'll meet, and how you'll divvy up the information.
Yeah.
But are there any, are there some towns that we feel the subcommittee definitely needs to be charged with looking at? Mr. Wilson recommended Tilton, and I saw a lot of, saw a lot of heads nod.
Yeah, Tilton, Littleton, we obviously understand Plymouth, well, to a degree.
Epping was mentioned.
Epping, yeah. Maybe we ought to try a coastal. Try a coastal, maybe even dip into Nashua, which is a little bit bigger, but...
Or, or again, ask somebody to state, if they have a sense of a good model, I mean, the state planner, the planners in the state might have a professional sense.
Yeah.
Well, let the subcommittee decide what, you know, we'll pick what we feel are the appropriate towns to approach.
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Charlie suggested other university towns, and I think that's a good idea, and Keene might be a good one.
Keene, absolutely.
Yeah. No, they have incredible commercial growth.
Yeah.
That, that might be more important than a coastal community.
I think that's more relevant personally.
Yeah, the coast, you've got Portsmouth, and Rye, and Newcastle, and they're worlds apart from there.
You do not want to make it so large, a survey that it's unwieldy and...
No.
No.
And not useful.
That's inefficient, that's poor, I think that's pretty...
Mr. Wilson?
I'd just suggest also that the question not just be what did they do for impact fees, but if you had to do it again, would you do it the same way? Because there may be some powerful lessons that they learned.
That's a very good point.
Mm-hmm. Great, I think we're ready to move on to other business then, on our agenda. That would be item number eight, unfinished and other business, and please, if anybody feels that I'm cutting off this conversation too quickly, yes, Mr. Ahern?
Did we pick a date for our first meeting?
No, we said the subcommittee would probably be able to meet...
Right, I think we're looking towards that, our, our standard workshop first Thursday...
Oh, you meant, you meant reporting back here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ahern, you meant reporting back here, or to meet as a subcommittee?
To meet as a subcommittee.
Oh, I defer to the chairman.
I...
We're going to, we're going to let you, you all use email, don't you?
Yes.
Mr. Ahern, you use email regularly? So I think that you'll be able to, to work out those, that schedule.
Yeah.
All right, then is there any other unfinished or other business?
I need to, once again, get, I guess, a head count of the field trip with the Groton Wind Farm with the Iber Droller folks.
Yes, that's on Friday.
I had queried everybody, well, theoretically, where it's at now, it's Friday, the 24th, next Friday, at 9:30, and I only had, I think, three folks that could do that. A lot of folks couldn't, if I can read my own notes right. Mr. Ahern could go at the time, Mr. Ranlet, chairman, you could go, so we had those three. Paul, Mr. Wilson could not make it, Ms. Bishop could not make it, Charlie, Mr. Berman could not make it, Mr. Kelly could not make it, Mr. Sutcliffe couldn't make, no, because it's, you know, it's in the middle of the workday, so...
I can do it.
Okay, Mr. Scarborough, can, I'll just give this back to you, and if, if the board feels that that's sufficient representation...
It's not like he gave us a lot of...
He didn't give us flexibility.
Flexibility.
No.
I mean, does the board feel comfortable with roughly four of us able to attend and report back?
How long a trip?
I, I think it's under two hours, it's, it's basically going to the different sites, no, you're...
You're going to have to climb to the top of 10.
How do you get there?
That's why Mr. Berman... Why, Mr. Berman demurred on that now.
Don't have any mountain, it's in an air-conditioned bus.
I have some story work done Tuesday, so I don't know.
Okay, good luck. We'll hope to see you there, and for all sorts of reasons, on Friday, then. Okay.
If that's the consensus, I'll get in touch with Mr. Chair, and I'll email everyone back to double check.
And you could go, too, you said.
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Well, just as soon as we ask Mr. Miller if there's any further public comments from the public.
I'll...
Okay. So now, the table's wide open, will it be Mr. Ahern or Mr. Scarborough?
Go ahead.
Or somebody else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And it looks like by motion, there's acclamation to go, so at 7:37, we're finished. Thank you, everybody.